Our first briefing items are both budget-related. As you know, one of the very explicit tasks and responsibilities of a school board is to balance a budget, which can be a challenge in our environment. But I know that Dr. Swift has assembled a terrific team to walk us through the general fund amended budget. And as I understand it, we'll move then into the general fund proposed budget, sort of as one holistic presentation. Of course, our budget process does go through a number of opportunities for public engagement, public opportunity to hear reports. This is just the beginning of our process. So we hope people will stick along with us. We hope that they'll engage in public hearing on the budget. We know we had some public commentary that was interested. And bring your questions forward because we're going to be looking at this a couple more times this summer. So, Dr. Swift, please, take it away.
Thank you. Vice President Kelly and trustees and members of the community, we watch our budget every month. And I appreciate trustee Gainer, Chair Gainer, Treasurer Lazarus, and trustee Kara Herro, who serve on the Finance Committee. We review every month the numbers as to where we are on our budget, on our spending plan for the year, and we make adjustments as we move through each year. In addition to doing that work at Finance Committee, we also bring forward to the community every month of the year, a budget monitoring report that includes our progress through the year and our expenditures and revenues through the year. So when we come to June, we are doing two things. One is settling out, amending this year's budget for 2021. And then, secondly, as Vice President Kelly shared, we are projecting the budget for 2122. It is always true, trustees, and you're very familiar, that we come to this time in June often with many essential questions about our funding yet unanswered. And trustees, this year is, as usual, we do not know our per pupil funding, and we aren't, of course, able to confirm enrollment until fall. But yet, during this COVID year, there are far more questions. So I've asked Ms. Osensky to just share one slide. Really, the summary, the story of this year's budget is about two things. Trustees, you know them by heart because you've been at our meetings almost, well, really weekly throughout this previous budget year. The text on this slide is small, and if we had a few minutes for discussion, we could make five more of these slides. But the overall narrative of this year's budget is really about COVID response and staffing expense. As we know, education is always a human-dense operation. We use people to accomplish our work in service to children, and we're proud of our team. And so, really, just these are very few of our highlights of what the additional work has been during this school year. Some of the items on this list were ongoing every month throughout the year. Additional staff, such as our additional nursing team, our health specialist team, our contact tracing team, the processes of testing, more than 9,000 tests. We're grateful that those COVID tests were provided by the state. But it is our personnel who expend the time to administer those tests. And that's at about 15 minutes per test, so you can just see how this multiplies. The work on our buildings in terms of ventilation, servicing and replacing filters in every single school building, in every area, mitigating our water and ensuring healthy water in the schools during this time. PPE, the Wednesday and Saturday enrichment program, programming that we provided during the times of the year when students could get outdoors and be active, that was very popular in our community. And most recently, vaccine clinics. I was delighted to join our team of Ann Arbor Public Schools nurses last Thursday, and all told, so far, about 500 individuals, many of them young people, 12 to 16 years of age, have received their vaccinations in our schools at the hands of our capable Ann Arbor Public Schools nurses. A food distribution, support with devices and connectivity. We supported hundreds of families with their connectivity needs. The digital library. Trustees, you know all of these things because we've covered them in meetings throughout the year. But as we begin with Ms. Minnick to review both the amended budget and the projected budget, just a reminder that these items permeate every line of the budget document. There's not a single area of our budget that has not been impacted by the COVID impact of this past year. It is my privilege to introduce this evening Ms. Jill Minnick, who serves as the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations in Ann Arbor Public Schools. She is also a CPA and has served as an auditor for the State of Michigan. She has delivered month by month, and we have delivered as a district, year by year, balanced budgets, which, as Vice President Kelly noted, is one of the central responsibilities of the board. So Ms. Minnick has actually merged the two items, because they really do flow together, is bringing forward the amended budget for this year that we're in, and then moving directly into the proposed budget. I appreciate, trustees, that you all have sat with us to explore a great deal of thinking and discussion about this budget. And I'm glad that we get this opportunity this evening. And then, two more Wednesday evenings, we have two public hearings on the budget as well. And with this time, we'll introduce Ms. Jill Minnick to share the details. Ms. Minnick?
Thank you, Dr. Swift. I appreciate your introduction. Good evening, trustees. It is my pleasure this evening to share with you the proposed 2020-21 final amended budget for the general fund. And as Dr. Swift mentioned, we will segue right on into the proposed 2021-2022 general fund budget. So trustees, you have in your materials this evening a copy of the proposed general fund final budget amendment document for 2020-2021. It is in the format required by the State of Michigan and the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and it is in the format, of course, as you will see in our audit reports. It includes the original budget adopted last June of 2020, and it is the current budget as it stands. And then illustrated alongside that is the proposed amended budget for this school year. We will take a look at this document in section by section. We will take a look at the revenues, the expenditures, and then, of course, the impact of those revenues and expenditures on our bottom line, on our fund balance. So first, let's take a look at the revenue. We can see that among the line items in our revenue budget, the most significant changes occur on the state source revenue line item and the federal source line item. So let's take a look at some of those highlights that comprise those changes. On the state revenue side, as Dr. Swift mentioned, our funding is primarily based on enrollment and foundation allowance and other types of funding allocations, but those are the primary types. And so, looking at our foundation allowance, you may recall that the budget was adopted last June on the heels of the May consensus revenue estimating conference. And at that time, at the beginning of the pandemic, it was anticipated that state source revenues from sales tax, income tax, and other types of sources would be quite grim. And so, we had anticipated a $700 per pupil reduction in our foundation allowance. But we know now that that did not materialize. The foundation allowance remained flat. And so, we were able to return about $12.5 million to our budget as a result of that. And then, of course, then at that time, because the situation appeared dire, we did not anticipate any one-time funding, but we did realize a $65 per pupil one-time funding allocation in the amount of about $1.2 million. And then statewide, public schools experienced an enrollment decline, including Ann Arbor Public Schools. And so, that impacted our revenue by about $1.6 million. But at the state level, the enrollments are blended, meaning the counts are taken from the October of the current school year and blended with the spring count of the prior year. But as a way to ease the revenue reductions across the state for all public schools, that typical student blend was blended even more. It was a super blend with even the prior school year. And that was just as a way to mitigate or soften those revenue reductions as a result of the enrollment decline across the state. On the federal revenue side, there were some significant changes as well. The first round of ESSR monies, the first round of elementary and secondary school emergency relief monies was allocated to Ann Arbor Public Schools in the amount of $1.2 million. We also received two rounds of coronavirus relief funds, or CRF grants, as they may be called. One is Section 11P, and that was at a value of 200, or rather, $350 per pupil, for a total of $6.29 million. The second allocation of CRF funds, Section 103 Sub 2, was in an amount of $12.32 per pupil, for a total allocation of about $221,000. So those federal revenues and the state revenues then comprise the most significant changes to the revenue side of our budget. Now, let's take a look at expenditures. Again, it is in the format required, illustrating the original budget and the proposed amended budget. So let's take a look at those highlights. And as Dr. Swift mentioned, a common thread across all expenditure line items in the course of doing our business is staffing and COVID-19 supports. So staffing needs in an amount of nearly $6 million. And then, COVID-19 supports, just as Dr. Swift mentioned, in so many different ways to support our students and the instructional programs, and in an amount of about $10.6 million. And then, the amount of those reimbursements, grant-funded or otherwise, has yet to be determined. Those details of what is eligible are still emerging, and we are keeping a close ear and eye on those details as they become known. So what is the impact of those revenues and expenditures on our bottom line? Let's take a look at that. The projected ending fund balance, then, is $20.2 million. Those revenues and expenditures were somewhat equivalent. We are only adding about $450,000 to that bottom line to equate to an ending fund balance of $20.2 million, and that is equivalent to about 7.39% of revenues, 7.4% of expenditures. And these values, of course, provide a beginning balance and a foundation for the 2021-2022 proposed general fund budget. And also in your materials this evening, trustees, you'll find a copy of the budget document for that proposed general fund budget for next school year. Again, it is in the format required. It shows a column for the audited figures for the prior fiscal year, the amended budget that is proposed, and we just reviewed, and then a final column for those proposed budget values. And again, we'll take it step by step. We'll look at revenues and then expenditures, and of course, our bottom line. So in the revenues, we can see again that the most significant changes between the amended budget and the proposed original budget, again, fall on the state source revenue line item and the federal source line item revenue. On the state revenue side, some highlights. Again, we see a foundation allowance and some enrollment changes. So on the foundation allowance, we are projecting a $50 per pupil increase, and that is based on the House proposal for state aid, and that is equivalent to about $840,000. On the enrollment side, we are anticipating that our fall count will be equivalent to our February count that we just had a few months ago. However, the funding will return to a traditional 90-10 blend, meaning 90% of the count will be the result of October 2021 student count, and it will be blended with the 10% value of the February count just a few months ago. So there is no super blend anticipated for those prior year enrollment losses. So we anticipate an impact, a negative impact to our revenue of about $9.1 million. We also need to account for the fact that the one-time per pupil funding that we see this current school year in the amount of $65 per pupil will be eliminated. It is one-time monies, so we need to reduce that revenue budget by the corresponding $1.2 million. On the federal revenue side, we need to account for the fact that we had some one-time grant funds that must now be removed from our revenue budget. And that includes the grants we covered just a short time ago, the coronavirus relief funds, the first round at $350 per pupil. We need to reduce our revenue budget by about $6.3 million. And then, the coronavirus relief funds, that second round of $12 per pupil, in the amount of $221,000. And then, of course, we need to reduce for the ESSR fund, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund Round 1, in the amount of about $1.3 million. However, we do anticipate that the, we need to add those released-to-date one-time grant funds, meaning what we know now is that the state has released 43.6% of the second round of ESSR monies. Again, this is one-time grant monies, and it is in the amount of $2.76 million. So we will add that one-time grant fund to our revenue budget for next fiscal year. So now, we will turn our attention to expenditures for the next school year. Some of those highlights include the fact that we are accounting for all costs to return to a full-day, five-days-per-week in-person instruction model. Of course, we will continue our A2 virtual for our secondary students and our A2 virtual and our A2 virtual live offerings for our elementary students. All costs related to all employee group and collective bargaining agreements, salaries, healthcare, retirement, attrition, and other benefits are included. And then, of course, COVID-19 supports, those that are grant-funded, as well as those that may not be grant-funded, whether they are continuing supports or perhaps new supports. We will, of course, monitor what is needed in order to support our students, and of course, what the environment around COVID-19 might look like in the fall. However, we do anticipate, of course, continuing COVID-19 supports as health and safety is a priority. So taking a look at the impact of those revenues and expenditures on our bottom line, on our fund balance, let's take a look at that. The projected ending fund balance, then, as a result of those revenues and expenditures, building on the amended budget's ending fund balance, then, is projected to be $13.5 million, and that is equivalent to 5.1% of revenues and 5% of expenditures. And again, just looking at that budget document overall, we know that the budget is a spending plan, and we, of course, will monitor the developments throughout the rest of the summer, the fall, and of course, throughout the year. And we saw this theme of how the fund balance changes during the different times of the year in those monthly monitoring reports, and we will continue, of course, to monitor that budget on a monthly basis and report back to you as well. So I'm happy to take any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Minnick. Trustees, I know it's a lot to take in, but most folks have had a little bit of time to think about it after seeing documents in committee. Trustee Gainer, questions?
Yeah, thank you. Of course, the big issue is the availability of the federal funds, the ESSR funds that have been tied up with the state legislature. I saw possibly some good news on some resolution this week, but, so if you have an update on that. I know we're, have a conservative approach because we're not planning on using money we don't have yet, but the likelihood is that we won't be getting some more money. And I want to be cognizant of that. I don't know if, I don't want to put trustee Dupree on the spot. The Michigan Educational Justice Collaborative has been trying to get community involvement in general on this issue, and I know she's up on it more than I am. But yeah, mostly I want to point that out, and I'm sure we have a wish list for hiring that we can't get to yet, but this is an initial comment. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Other trustees, questions? Yeah, trustee Dupree.
I just wanted to know if it was okay if I just repeated some of the questions that I had before, you know, just to make sure that folks in communities, they wanted to understand the same thing, that they would have the opportunity to.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
Okay. So one of the questions that I had was around our options, our having an in-person option, virtual option, and then the third option that we have. With the virtual option, we may have to increase our staff. So which staff members will we have to actually hire?
And the last thing I heard was the word "hire" with regard to the hiring of teachers to staff the programs. Was there more to the question, trustee Dupree?
No, just knowing, like, what staff will we have to hire in order to cover the virtual programming?
Right. Thank you, trustee Dupree, for that question. We opened full virtual, A2 virtual, both at elementary and middle school last year. It had been running at high school prior for several years. So it really, we do have a good, strong team there already. And just like we do every summer, we'll monitor enrollment, and we will adjust our staff according to the enrollment, whether there are preferences for in-person, whether there are preferences for the independent virtual A2V, or whether their preference at elementary is for the A2 live synchronous option. So we'll staff accordingly, and we'll keep you updated as we go through the summer. At this time, we're expecting a normal amount of hiring, a customary amount, but we will continue to learn more about that through the summer.
Thank you. Thank you. And I think the second question I had, hold on, because I wrote it down. So the second question I had, whoa, what, from what buckets of money? I know we have, like, different pockets of money that can be used for different things. What pockets do the hotspots in those type of technology, what does that come out of?
Thank you for that question. The support for our families to remain connected, which we all know is so key and critical for learning, both in a virtual environment and in a traditional face-to-face in-school environment, it's so important for our children to have that access in order to support their learning. So that is from a variety of the areas. The Comcast program, where we are paying a reduced amount for families to have that access, as well as the Jetpack or the approach where we're providing a hotspot into the home, all of those can be addressed through the COVID dollars. Some of them can be addressed through technology funds. You are right, some of them can be addressed through certain other grant funds. And Ms. Minnick, I won't speak for her, she can respond also, but we always use that tiered approach to funding that starts with one-time money, COVID money, grant money, all the other options, and holds general fund as the last option, because that is our precious bucket that is used for staffing. So, so she really uses a priority approach to that funding. In, in this size of budget, that line item is not a very big percentage-wise line item, and we do have a deep commitment to it. So I feel very confident about being able to continue that. Ms. Minnick, was there anything else you wanted to share on that, how we decide which bucket is used for the connectivity support?
Yeah. Thank you for that question, trustee. And Dr. Swift, your answer was spot-on. We always try to utilize grant dollars where possible and protect that general fund so that we can provide all those supports for our learning and our teaching, for all of our students alike. But of course, our commitment to that connectivity and the technology is, it's paramount, and we will continue to fund that. And as Dr. Swift mentioned, it is proportionately a small dollar value compared to a number of other supports that we are providing as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Dupree. Trustee Baskett?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to highlight again the opportunities for the community to have input into our budget. And so, I know Dr. Swift reviewed the process, but again, I just want to emphasize that it doesn't take a coalition to have input into our budget. We have, as we've mentioned, a monthly meeting with our committee that's open to the public. We have, of course, our big Board of Education meeting, and at any time, someone can give us input regarding how we're spending our dollars. We, as a board, approve the budget as recommended by the experts, if you will, the subject matter experts in our school financing, in our budget. Again, though, people don't have to wait for the end of the year or the beginning of the year, depending on how you look at it, to give us that input. We welcome input. And again, when we, as trustees, look at the budget, we often add, you know, suggestions, the question, again, is this enough? Is this put in the right place, et cetera, et cetera? So while I appreciate the efforts of the MEJC, and I welcome the opportunity to talk with them more about the overall input, where, and this is where I'll talk about local decision-making, where we, as a board, still have the opportunity to dictate where our dollars go, we do that with the input and the knowledge of the community. Again, this is local decision-making. Now, for those who are advocating more decision-making before we get to the dollars, well, we see what's happening now. The feds have released money to Michigan, and we haven't gotten money because people are trying to make decisions at this point on how that's given out to us based on what contingencies, and the monies are held up. As Ms. Minnick has already shown us, the reimbursements for the monies that we have already spent are undetermined. We don't know when we're going to get them, and, you know, how much exactly we're going to get them, yet we have to make a decision on the budget. So I don't know, for those who are not aware, we have to approve a budget by law, we have to approve a budget by the end of June. We have seen where we've made these approvals not having any idea how much we're going to get from the state, and we have seen where the promise is made, where not the promise is kept. And I'll never forget the time when we had to cut, when the state said, "We want money back in January." Fortunately, because of our fund balance that we had, we made those cuts without laying off anybody. And not every district could say that. That was mid-year, that was totally unexpected. So again, where we make this, we have the opportunity to do the local decision-making, we base, we do it, and sometimes we're basing on hope and a prayer, and we know that things could change at any minute. So again, we welcome the opportunity to hear from the community. We hear from the community often, as we know, especially in recent weeks. So for those who are still wanting the opportunity, please, please, participate in our public hearing on the budget. Feel free to come to the Budget Committee. participate in our public hearing on the budget. Feel free to come to the budget committees. Feel free to put it in public commentary what you think we need to do. Again, we're not hiding from anything. We welcome the opportunity. Thank you, Madam President.
Excellent reminders, trustee Baskett. It's always good to have the historical perspective of how this timeline can be quite frustrating and a reminder of the process. Trustees, other questions for Ms. Minnick? Other points? Trustee Dupree?
Yes, I think I forgot, apparently, actually, trustee Baskett actually reminded me when she was talking about the coalition. During the meeting, a parent asked a question that I honestly could not figure out the answer to. And the question was, I think it was the ESSER 1 funds, that some of the funds that we use to be able to prepare the school for COVID, as far as like ventilation and things like that. How much of it did we already use and how much is left?
Thank you. Ms. Minnick, go ahead.
Thank you for that question, trustee. So the monies that I itemized on the revenue side of the ledger, the ESSER monies, the coronavirus relief funds, those two sources of the coronavirus relief funds, those, for the most part, have been spent. We allocated those funds for ventilation, for PPE, for training, for professional development, for response to the COVID pandemic. And in fact, we continue to track costs that may or may not be eligible for any grant reimbursement as well. And so we will continue to track those through the rest of this fiscal year and of course next year as well. So we are fully utilizing every dollar of those coronavirus sources of grants so that we could properly respond to the pandemic and for supporting our student learning throughout.
Thank you. Trustee Lazarus?
Thank you, Chair Kelly. I just want to say to, I just wanted to remind, first, thank you, Ms. Minnick, for such a concise and very clear presentation. It's very helpful to see it in that format, to understand the ins, the outs. The, I don't like to see the brackets around numbers, but I understand them. But this is, I just want to remind the public that piggybacking a little bit off of trustee Baskett's comments, we are by law required to pass a budget, adopt a budget and pass it by June 31st every year. The state is not required to provide us a budget until October 1st. That's their fiscal year. So last year, when we passed our budget for 2021 school year, we were passing a budget in the dark, literally. We did not have a budget from our state legislators to give us a really good idea of where we were with our future dollars for our students. They also took money away from us in the 11th hour, which kind of caused some problems with our budget. And, but then they had COVID dollars to help in the next year, our fiscal year, to actually help get us out of that hole. So we were in a hole, then we were out of the hole very, almost overnight. And we appreciate that. And as you can see from the comparison to the original budget to the amended budget, the federal COVID dollars and the CARES funds really helped right-size our budget, as well as that we were very conservative of believing that we would have to dig into our fund balance by $700 per student and that unfortunately we did not have to do. But still, we barely broke even in this world of COVID. And all the different extra monies that we were able to get as one-time fund monies through COVID funds, we still were very close to a zero-sum, you know, budget. So looking into the forward future, those things that we implemented, and I understand talking to some local trustees around the district and outside of our districts, communities and counties, they are not providing a virtual option for their students. Young elementary students are not probably going to be vaccinated. I hope they will be. But it's possible and likely that they won't be. So we are committed to making sure that we keep our students, our youngest, safe. And we are providing that options to our families. There will be no hybrid. So that won't be an option, but there will be a five-day in-person option also. So we're trying to meet every family's specific needs for their children's education. So to do that, it will cause us, as you can see in the proposed budget for 2122 or 2122 budget, we're looking at digging into our fund balance almost $7 million. And that hopefully can be subsidized by COVID money. It hasn't been determined yet. But we, as fiscally sound trustees, we have to budget what we know we are going to get, or at least have a very good idea of what we believe we will get. Because we cannot, it's like counting your chickens before they're hatched. So we need to be conservative. Some people may think this is very conservative budget, but it is a budget that we believe we can support. And we are being asked as a body, a legal body, to actually adopt this budget and move forward to make sure that our spending and our accounting is sound. So I hope we can do an amended budget as these COVID funds are actually released at the state level, because they have already been released at the federal level. So we're just waiting and we hope that our community will contact our state legislators to let them know, please, our children, our school districts need these funds and we need it to make sure that we have a strong fall. So I just want to make sure that this budget is based on what we know and what we really believe will come to fruition. But we hope, and we do know that there are other funds out there, but they just haven't been clarified as to how they will be trickled down to the local public school level. So I just want our community to know that. Thank you.
That's good perspective. Thank you, trustee. Trustee Baskett?
Yeah, I forgot to ask one thing regarding, again, what we control and what we can't control and what we still have to spend regardless, about the retirement percentages. We know that we have to pay a percentage of our salaries at a rate that we have absolutely no input into, knowing that some of our employees who may be with us just for a few hours of the day or even the year, we still have to pay into a retirement fund that they will never live long enough to receive. Ms. Minnick, what is it looking like? I mean, what are we budgeting for in terms of that percentage from that source?
Thank you for your question, trustee. We are budgeting right around 44%. And it is kind of a blend. In fact, it is a blend, rather, because we have so many employees and so many different retirement plans. And so we need to average that percentage out. And additionally, whatever school aid package is passed will also dictate or call for what types of supports may or may not come for retirement funding. So that still remains to be seen as well and exactly what that impact will be on our district and districts across the state.
How long has it been 44%?
That is, that's, let me explain that. That is a combination of the unfunded actuarial liability that the state passes through, but that we remit back to the state. And it also includes then that foundation amount of whichever retirement plan our employees belong to, as well as we have some employees in defined contribution plans where districts are required to match certain retirement costs. So that is a grossed-up retirement rate, but that we need to account for in our budget on the expenditure side of the ledger.
And how much of an increase is that? 44% from what last year? What did we budget for?
I'm so sorry. I don't have that at the top of my
No, that's fine. I apologize for not having asked that in our briefing, our initial briefing. Yeah.
We'll bring that forward and share it with the board and share it with the public. In my recollection, it was above 40%, but I agree with you. That sounds slightly higher than last year, but Ms. Minnick will check that so that we're sure our statement is accurate.
And again, this is something that we at the local level have no control. We, I mean, it doesn't matter how much we yell, it's too ridiculous. We have to pay it. There is no And in the years when we got money from the state, a lot of it in past, you know, has been money designated just for that fund. So we really didn't get it because we had to give it immediately back. So just wanted to clarify. And again, you know, whatever help we can get from the community to address this, we so appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Any other questions, comments for tonight's budget conversation? All right. Well, I want to thank Dr. Swift and Ms. Minnick. I know that I had some questions when we received a small group briefing and my fellow trustees are on that same wavelength because they asked those for the benefit of the public tonight on camera. So I have none, but I do appreciate how thorough this conversation is because it's a really important part of the process of the work that the board does.